All to order, please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our February 25th, Tiverton School Committee meeting. Is there anyone signed up for open forum? Okay. We like that. Ask for motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, second.
All those in favor? Dr. Sanquioni? Isn't really too much on it.
Yeah, there's nothing there for the superintendent.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes?
Could I make a motion to move item 10D up on the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Mrs. Moore? Ready?
Mr. Ashley, do you kind of stout the introduction or is Ms. Moore right up?
Ms. Moore?
Club for this school called Girls Who Code. It's an organization that's been around for a while, goes back at least to 2012. And it's nationwide organization. If you go forward, please. So here's just a quote, they have an extensive website which I got a lot of this information from. But as you can see, Girls Who Code is on a mission to close the gender gap in technology and to change images of what a programmer looks like and does. As many of us know, that computer science field is very male dominated. The statistics show at this point, maybe, you know, 25-ish percent of women go into the computer science fields. So this is just a little snippet that I know that's in your packet about the drop off. And there is a significant drop off, especially in the high school years between the ages of 13 and 17, where girls who may have been interested in coding and computer science, it starts to really decline. So when this club was established, it really has a focus on girls, which we'll get to in a second. Benefits to us in our school, we really are advocating to women and access to and opportunities to really let them explore their interests and really get to know computer science in an environment that is free from gender bias and from the intimidation that women typically can feel in a, you know, a mixed classroom. And it also provides, of course, building on our computer science pathway as we're trying to establish that. It's just another component of this. This is just a quick picture of code.org, Girls Who Code. To let you see that they are nationwide, they're all over. At this point, there's been over 185,000 girls that have been involved and have been successful with this program. So here are just some more statistics. In 1995, it shows the, talking about the gap is becoming worse. Thirty-seven percent of girls went on to work in the computer science field. And then 2017, we're seeing a reduction here with 24%. And they're predicting 2027 to 22%. So if we do nothing, you know, that rate is going to decline significantly. Again, fewer than one in five computer scientists graduates are women. I did reach out to some of my people that I worked closely with through my computer science education at URI to ask for them to some graduation statistics. And they just, it was kind of last minute notice, so they haven't got back to me. But they did initiate and let me know that it is definitely, there are significantly more male than female graduates in the computer science field. Again, and this is about the last, this is really showing a graphic of how the computer science ebbs over time in that biggest drop off of time. We see 66% are interested in computer science and it really takes a dive in their high school years, 13 to 17 years old. And then, you know, 4% college freshmen are looking at that field. So with that being said, unless you have any questions, again, I'm asking for your approval. This is, I'm a volunteer position that, and I, you know, I have a lot of girls that are interested. I've just been, you know, speaking to some that I think would be interested in such a program. And if I do get approval by March 15th, they will get free Code, Girls Code t-shirts. So, free! Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'm going to ask for a motion for approval and then open the floor to questions. Do you want to arm wrestle over it? Alright, there's a motion that has been made and seconded. Questions? Mrs. Pavo?
Mrs. Moore, do you attribute the drop off to anything specific? I mean, that drop off is, you know, great and it just keeps getting worse.
Correct.
What happens when they get to high school age? Do they lose interest? Does it become more difficult?
I don't have a concrete answer for that. It could be interest, it could be lack of exposure, it could be the stigma that computer science has. Oh, that's, you know, for smart people, that's for boys or something, you know? So I don't know, but I think with a club like that, where again, they're free from the gender bias, they are working with other girls and saying, seeing how successful they are. I'm seeing it in my classes and I've just been, you know, coding with my classes a couple of years now. And it's getting a little better. Last year I had two girls in my AP Computer Science class. This year I have six.
Oh, that's good.
So it's getting better. And they're really smart and they're really good, you know? So it's building that confidence. And then hopefully they're sharing, you know, spreading the word with that, that they like my class.
I think this is a wonderful idea. And thank you for bringing it to us. To Mrs. Pavo's point, you know, it is shocking to see the drop in the high school area. So you're doing your part to hopefully get some interest in some of the girls here in Tiverton. Now, in the middle school, are we still running Cyber Patriot?
Yes, we are.
And do we have, do you have any idea off the top of your head, the percentage of girls?
Well, it's increasing.
Okay.
This year we had about six who participated, but it is not.
Yeah, because if we can catch them at this age, the world is their oyster once they're out of high school. But if they lose interest, if it's the peer pressure, the geek thing, I don't know. Do you see any of your contemporaries?
A few of my close friends take AP Computer Science with Ms. Moore, a couple of my close friends that are girls and boys. And I've heard a lot of good feedback on the class. I think that it's been, it's definitely an improvement of, whereas in my sophomore year, I hadn't really heard much about it. Whereas now, I think there's a lot of positivity around the class. I personally signed up for the class in the coming year along with some of my closer friends. I know that there's at least three of us, girls and my close friends, out of 10 out of 250, at least, girls signed up for it. So I think that's already a jump in numbers. But I've even spoken to Ms. Moore in the past couple of weeks about how she was proposing this club idea and we were all, I think, more interested in trying it. I told Ms. Moore personally that I would help her with anything she needed. And a couple of us are already excited to join. So I think that the proposal of the club is a wonderful idea and I can definitely see that there's a lot of interest in it. And I think that just with the small amount of people who know about it, I think that that's a really good number for us. Especially how it was said, how there's a few girls on the Cyber Patriot team at the middle school. I think giving the outlet with positive role models such as girls and my friends and I, who I think hopefully make positive role models, but showing a passion for STEM subjects, I think giving girls that outlet will be really helpful.
Very good. Well said.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Black?
Yes. Hi, Julie.
Hi.
As a woman from the 70s, we have to make sure that these girls know, just get out of my way. Okay? We have to make sure they know they're welcome here and they can do it just as well as anyone else. It's very exciting that, I can't believe that's still happening, to tell you the truth, but I guess it is. So we have to make sure it doesn't, give them the opportunities. And I think this is great. Thank you so much for everything you've done for that program.
Sure, thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Okay, well, it's always nice to hear from the 70s, Mrs. Black. It was, I remember them too, although maybe in a different, in a different way than you do. Anyway, thank you very much. This is a wonderful initiative and thank you for being a role model for this as well. So if there's any other questions, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Alright, I'm going to ask for a motion to move up item, where'd it go? 10A?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All those in favor? Mr. Cabral?
Good evening. Each year, the Rhode Island Department of Education invites school superintendents and principals to recommend one to two educators to represent their district as an educational leader. These educators demonstrate the following. Exceptional educational talent, as evident by effective instructional practices. Exemplary educational accomplishments. Individuals who contribute to education on a daily basis. An engaging and inspiring presence that motivates and impacts students. It is with my great pleasure, I announced that Amanda Scanlon has been selected as the Educational Leader Representative of Tiverton this year. And I'd like to congratulate Amanda and give her a certificate.
Any words of wisdom, Miss Scanlon?
I don't know, to me, it's just all about the students and doing what's best for them each day. And whatever I need to do to get that done is what I do, so.
Alright, well, thank you very much and congratulations.
One of the other important functions that Amanda does for us is she's the educational instructional lead for our kindergarten. So during our PLCs, she's the instructional lead for kindergarten. And she's been, she's been a great asset.
Okay, thank you and congratulations again. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Alright, we are on item 9A, Policy 1142, Health and Wellness, second reading. I'm going to ask for a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do want to thank Ms. Donnelly Roach for incorporating all of the changes that we went into deep discussion on at our, the last meeting that we had this on the agenda. The only question that remains, and this is really just to make sure we don't miss it, is in the very first paragraph, under purpose, you completely struck out the name of the school department. And so it just says "the" is. So if you could just make sure that that doesn't completely disappear. Other than that. Yeah, just have something there though, the district or the, whatever, but not just a blank.
My intention was to just say the district, which is what the other policies generally say.
It's fine.
Simply, it's hypo.
It's fine. But other than that, again, thank you for all the changes.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, I'm just trying to read through real quickly the school charge to see if there's any. Can you gloss a little bit for us the school charge policy?
Meal charge.
The meal charge policy, what did I say, school charge policy? No, school's free.
We don't charge.
There's an emotional cost. But the meal charge policy in particular, what happens, you know, so sort of the public knows what we're actually enacting here. What happens when a student is in arrears, shall we say?
My understanding was that the intention, in terms of our agenda, was to pair the two to make it clear that they do dovetail. Not necessarily recommend any changes to the meal charge policy, which had been discussed by the committee at the previous meeting, and just to make sure they dovetail.
Okay.
Yeah, we enacted the current version in August of last year. And again, the purpose of showing it here is just to show the linkage between the two policies. But they are still two separate policies and we're not making any changes at this time to the meal charge policy.
Okay. Alright. And, okay, good. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. We're up to item 9B, Policy 1023, School Improvement Team, second reading. So this is the policy regarding implementation of the School Accountability Act with implementing the school improvement teams. I'll ask for a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so any discussion or questions?
I think the only comment that I have at this point, and I don't have any additional suggestions as to content, but I would like to ask that we put it on some kind of agenda, let's say, in, toward the end of this year, after we've fully implemented the policy, to review it and see if there are any changes we need to make, rather than waiting an extended amount of time.
Sure, happy to do that. Yeah, yeah. So actually, I was wondering, Peter, if you could tell us how you see things going from here for the rest of the school year, anyway?
Just by guiding the school improvement teams?
Yeah.
Now, I'll invite my colleague principals who actually run those teams to chime in here, but I know that all five schools' teams have been assembled, that you approved their school improvement plans earlier this school year and it's the duty of the school improvement team to work through those plans and to enact them and make sure that they're followed through. They also have all used their school improvement teams to make their budget submissions. And so we've reviewed them and followed them in that. Later on in the year, any handbook changes that our principals will propose, will go through the school improvement team also for review and suggestions. I would say those are the main tasks that we're looking for our school improvement teams to be part of. But again, I'd ask any of my colleagues who'd like to talk how it's actually going in the field.
Do you want to speak or just nod sagely?
So I'll speak for Ranger. A school improvement team is part of our parent-teacher organization. So the same members that we meet with every month, as far as our fundraising, is also members of our school improvement team. We meet separately when the issue comes up, when we put together the school improvement plan. We met separately as a school improvement team, but it's a subgroup of the PTO. I talk about a lot of the budget things at PTO meetings, like to update the entire PTO, which this year has been a really large group. We've got about 16 to 17 parents that have been attending. So it's a process of keeping the parents informed, as well as getting input from the parents.
Yeah, just to reiterate, everything that's been said, Dr. Sanquioni, what Mr. Cabral commented about for the high school too, an opportunity for me to receive feedback from the parents about any additional topics that's on their mind, you know, that's not on the formal agenda.
The middle schools, school improvement team, we meet monthly and we have an agenda set and we discuss implementation of our school improvement plan in addition to, you know, scheduling concerns. I get feedback from the teachers, as well as parents who sit on the team. Middle and high school are a little more specific in the law, where I have to have on my school improvement team at least two coordinators. And I think Chris has to have two department chairs, so we can get feedback from them as well. And as we move forward, like I sent them our handbook for next year, give me feedback on any recommendations for changes. Really, it's an integral part of our communication between parents and students that we have this committee and it's working well.
At Fort Barton School, our team meets again once a month. And we not only go over what our goals were, our unified goals for all three elementary schools, we also have a fourth goal, and that's PBIS. So we monitor the implementation of that. We also get feedback from students and faculty and parents about that. And we've made some adjustments. So it really is a very vital team. And it's funny, even when we meet really early, like quarter past seven, 7:30 in the morning, it's a full house. So it's really great.
Great, so, sounds exciting. Very good. So any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you. So we are up to item 10B, Teacher-Student Absenteeism Presentation. Dr. Sanquioni?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we're going to present to you this in three different formats. We're going to start with Principal Wardell, who's going to provide you some information on just the overall impact and solutions to chronic absenteeism, both from the student and staff perspective. Then Principal Craven's going to get into the specifics around student absenteeism, how that's tracked by ride and the devices we use to try to not only track our students' attendance, but also encourage them to come to school. And then Ms. Donnelly Roach will conclude the presentation by using, showing you how teacher attendance is tracked through the ride portal, now that also impacts the ratings on our schools. So with that precursor, I'll turn it over to Principal Wardell.
So at the Rhode Island Association of School Principals' January meeting, we invited Dr. Todd Rogers from Harvard University. And he's one of the creators of the Attendance Works Tool that Sue will be talking about in a few minutes. And he gave us an overall recommendation, the overall recommendation to improve student attendance and to reduce chronic absenteeism is to engage parents more. Which is great, but the 90-plus principals there said, what else can you give us? What are the actions that we can take? So the first action is the idea of simplification or changing or shifting to default. And that's basically an opt-in, opt-out system. And if you look at their research, they did a lot of extensive longitudinal research with the Boston Public Schools. And they currently are using opt-out rather than opt-in. Their results were, if opt-in is in an email where families need to visit a website without a provided link, you get about 10% of families to sign up. If you do an opt-in as an email, but you put an embedded link, you get about 40% of parents to sign up. However, if you do an automatic opt-out, everyone's automatically enrolled, you actually retain about 90% of your parents in receiving communications from the schools. And people sometimes don't know what they don't know. They don't know what they're missing. So that's why Boston Public Schools now are doing it this way. And it's not only Boston Public Schools, it's places throughout Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New York. So that was his first recommendation. The second idea was...
So they're opting in to or opting out of some system for tracking absenteeism?
Just overall district communication.
Oh, I see, okay, alright, got it.
The second idea was pre-populate forms. So every year in Tiverton, we do send out the parental forms where you get all of the biographical data for the students. And we ask kids and families to redo those same exact forms year after year after year. And then we have to chase down the forms. And instead of doing that, what he suggested was pre-populate the forms and tell parents, just change what you need to change. If there's a change, send back the form with the change. It's a way to take some of, because families are very, very busy and it's a way to open up those lines of communications with them, but it's a way to not put any additional burden on families and families appreciate that. And then the last idea was notifications. And there is two things with notifications. The first, he said, is, especially if you're using the opt-out system, where everyone's basically opted in, unless they decide to opt out, notify the day or as soon as you can when a student either skips a class or starts to fail a class. But that constant parental communication is essential. And then the second one was really a very big topic of discussion for the principals. Because if you ask those principals around the state, we do have perfect attendance awards. And the theory behind perfect attendance awards is you reward perfect attendance, which encourages students with perfect attendance to keep up the same level of attendance. And it motivates other students to want to have perfect attendance. However, in reality, after doing multiple studies, what they found is the opposite to be true. What happens is, whether it's consciously or subconsciously, when people see that they have perfect attendance awards, they might say, well, you know, you have perfect attendance. Why not let's take like one or two weeks out of school for a family vacation? You can afford that, you have perfect attendance. And what happens is, when that happens, it actually decreases the overall school performance. So that was really, that was a shock for the Principals Association. And he actually gave another, another way to look at that. He said businesses actually are using that same type of science. And he cited National Grid. He said National Grid, for any of you who have National Grid, about four times a quarter, four times a year, will send out your energy usage as compared to your neighbor's energy usage. And they'll either put a frown or they'll put, you know, a regular face or they'll put a smile to see how you're using your energy. And they said, the reason why National Grid does that is because families that are not using a lot of energy, they tend to see, especially in the summer months or in the winter months, an uptick after they send out those notices for using energy. So it's, it was kind of very surprising.
So you...
Do you have a question?
Yeah, are you planning to discontinue the use of perfect attendance awards?
I've been doing personal attendance awards for a long time at Fort Barton School. I never really had this research or looked at this research. I mean, obviously, the school year has already begun. So I'm going to continue doing it for the school year. But I'm also very carefully tracking our student attendance. And I'm always looking for ways to improve student attendance. So I don't think it's a bad idea to try one year to see whether or not, and compare the data that I have for current student attendance and see if it has any impact on student attendance and possibly revisit it after that. But I'd really like to see, because I'm really concerned about student attendance.
So, Mr. Chairman, before we move on to Ms. Craven's understanding of how student attendance is tracked from Ms. Wardell's research and what she brought back to the ad team, you may have noticed that you all received a text message from us saying whether you'd like to opt out of it. So we have employed that new communication system now and plan to use that with our parents to not only inform them about attendance, but a lot of things that are happening in our schools.
Actually, I thought it was opt-in or opt-out, wasn't it? Okay. I opted in.
I didn't.
Did you get it even though?
I get enough emails.
No, no, it's not emails, it's text messages.
No, I realize that, but I get enough.
But you know, they automatically get the texts, but you have to approve to continue to receive the texts. And that's federal law.
That's what I did.
I do have one other question, though, and perhaps a suggestion. The, I like the idea of pre-populating forms. And in this technological world that we all live in, I know that I am occasionally the recipient of emails from, let's say, a bank that says, please update your information, whatever it may be, you know? A bank's probably not the best idea, but what's your rescue email or whatever. And they'll keep hounding me until I do. I find that to be very effective. I mean, I don't like it, but, you know, but I could tell you as a parent that filled out that silly form for 13 years with the same exact information, you know, anything you can do to make it easier and on everyone, including the school staff, I would welcome.
And I think that that's really a great idea too, you know, what you said.
Sure.
So with, yeah, so with Aspen, we're actually going to be implementing workflows that are built into the actual, the student information database that allows any family that has access to Aspen to initiate a contact change right on the site. So everything is already there for you, and allows you to view it. If it's incorrect, you can make the updates, and then the school gets that update sent immediately.
And perhaps require an acknowledgement annually?
Yes, and, and there is actually, anytime you make a change, there's a date stamp that you have to actually hit save on, so that we'll be able to look at as a building level, district level, to see which families have actually gone in and made these updates. And we can tailor our school messenger, which sends out the messages around those and say, hey, you have enough of your information in the past couple of days. So we would, we would be able to tailor a lot more messaging around that as well, like you said, in that hounding-type way, but not really, you know, like harassing them enough, but we would have the ability to do that.
And Rhode Island Department of Education did a nice job in producing the attendance tool, and what the attendance tool is designed for principals to track their students' attendance every day live. Tracking data is presented to us, and it is public knowledge as well. So when you think about the attendance tool, if you scroll to the next slide, Dave, when you log into the attendance tool on the RIDE portal, you can see I have a screenshot here of my attendance data. Ten percent of the students, you know, have been chronically absent this year. It gives you the number of students who are in your district. It gives you your percentage in relationship to the other schools in Rhode Island, and it gives you the number of students who are on track to be chronically absent this year. It also gives you a data tool where you can track the months and when students, obviously, are more chronically absent, and you can see a spike during certain times of year. The nice part about this, this tool is that you also have the ability to nudge parents, essentially. And when you look at the dashboard there, we have the ability to send text messages to families through the RIDE portal directly, and also they pre-populate letters for those students who are identified as chronically absent. And this is what the letter looks like. It's a form letter, already done, it has the student's name, obviously, I blacked it out. It shows the student in relationship to other students in Rhode Island and identifies them as being chronically absent. And it's just an alert notice, and this gets mailed to families once a month from the Tiburon Middle School, and it's a little alert to families that this is where your child is in relationship to other students in the state, and really just keeps them on notice that it's a, it's a, it's an issue, it's a concern that your child's not in school. And then in the portal, we can also see where we are as a school in relationship to other schools in Rhode Island, as well as, if you look at the next screen, where we are in relationship to each other. So if you, you can look at that, I know it's, it's hard to see, but you have Fort Barton on top with the, the gold trophy, Tiburon Middle School is next, and Ranger. And this changes daily. So sometimes I'll go in and I'll be third, and Manny will be on top, so there's a, there's a nice competition built into this system, which is, which is great, because it, it makes you go on, pay attention to it, and then you can look at where you are across the state, and I think we're doing pretty well. I mean, I know Suzette, last week, you were in the top fifty. Exactly, so we do look at it. It's, it's ideal for us to be able to access this information that quickly, and when I send out nudges to parents, a text message goes out, and it's just the click of a button. And the letters are all done, so it's just a matter of printing them and mailing them to families. I, this is the first year that this program is going into effect. Correct. Will they be giving you data as you compared to last year at the same time as this goes on? They do. I mean, that's essentially our school report card, that, that you're, you're describing. They always look at the student data for, for a part of that. When they, they look at the test scores, teacher absenteeism, student absentee, absenteeism, and factor all of that into your final star rating. Okay.
If you look at the slide that's up on the screen now, the yellow colored with the brownie face that's on it, it says from kids from last year.
Right. It is hard to see, and I, you know what, the, the reason why I, I had to take screenshots, because when I log in to the system as a user, all of the students who are chronically absent, their names come up, so I didn't want to expose any, any names. Any questions on that piece?
So that's a great way of identifying the problem or guilty parties, if you will. Is there, what information do we have about an intervention that actually then changes the-
So that's, that's exactly what we do. We, after five days of being chronically absent, we have our nurse contact the families to say, you know, is your child ill? And if so, please send us medical documentation to let us know. We use the statistics to also identify those chronically absent and make those phone calls, and we have attendance meetings at our school, calling the parents. It's not for every family, but it's for those who we know are a big concern, and just for them, the information that they need to know is really, it's not just a day here and there, really, impact your child's education when you're chronically absent, and give them more of an education on the law without really shaming them at all, and just helping them have a better understanding of what, what the role of a school district is when it comes to student attendance.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, please. Okay. Okay. Next.
In terms of teacher absenteeism, which is also an indicator for our school report cards, you have actually all the indicators up there, I'll just read them briefly. The bold headers, academic achievement, student growth. So academic achievement is sort of moving from one, two, or three in terms of meeting the standard or exceeding the standard. Growth is in between there, and so we know that students who may test at any level certainly grow. And so there's student growth as well as student academic achievement. For districts that have a large enough percentage of students who are English language learners, that's an indicator. Graduation rate, additional commissioner seals and things like that are coming down the line very quickly, and then you can see highlighted the student chronic absenteeism and the teacher chronic absenteeism, which are components of what they call school quality and student success. Suspension rates and students who exceed expectations are also noted there. In terms of teacher chronic absenteeism, the threshold is generally the same as students being ten percent of a school year or absent from work, ten percent of the days that they are employed. They do adjust that for people who might work part-time, and it's still that ten percent threshold, but there are some exceptions. And so I pulled the indicators from the RIDE technical manual there. Again, I'm sorry for the size of the slide, but you can see the bullet points there. Things like going to a professional development conference, or going on a field trip, or other off-campus activities where you may take our students to a work site, of course, do not count as absences, and pre-approved absences due to family medical leave or similar things that exceed five days also do not count against anyone. People have a right to those kinds of things, but-
Before you go any further, though, it brings me back to the student part of this. Are there any instances where excused absences are not counted?
No.
Like a field trip?
No.
Well, field trip is part of their educational day. So if a field trip is part of the, the student's education, so that they're not absent, but in the eyes of RIDE, you're either in school or out of school. That's it.
With the students.
Yeah, for the students.
It's a really good point, because I can remember getting- Exactly. -notifications when my child was on a field trip and saying, this is silly. Hopefully, our data is getting better, and the more we pay attention to this, our data is getting more and more accurate. But to your point, I think there was a, a time when you could be excused from school or, you know, those kinds of things. And we certainly value parents calling in and letting us know when they're not, we're not expecting their child. We want to make sure everybody's accounted for and safe. But in terms of RIDE, the data that we report daily, which is what feeds these leaderboards, absent is absent for students. For teachers, there are exceptions for that, professional learning, and obviously adult responsibilities such as family medical leave or extended illnesses. But those have to be approved.
There is an exemption for students if they're in the hospital.
Right.
And, and, and we're providing tutoring for them.
We're providing tutoring. So they're still attending, essentially.
Correct.
Right, they're still receiving.
But that's, that's the only exception, and that's, that's a tough one to, to explain to parents.
Right.
But as, as we get more into this, it's like Mrs. Roche said, you have to be in school.
There's no such-
You know what I mean? And it's ten, ten percent of the entire school. They're taking ten percent of actual days, so right now, I think we're at one-twenty something.
Right.
So it's ten percent of the hundred and twenty, twenty-fifth day. The whole year, it's ten percent of a hundred and eighty days, so that's where the eighteen, and that's, that's where our points come from at the end of the year.
Right.
Thank you. I think it also forces us to really reflect on what we do here, right? And so we know that strong educators are what makes a difference, and we know that education makes a difference in general, so we want everyone to be in school. The state has a leaderboard for educators as well. Right now, it's in arrears, so we're looking at twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen data. But during that school year, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine schools reported their information and were ranked across the state. Fifty-eight of those had zero percent of teachers absent more than eighteen days, or eighteen days or more, excuse me. So that's twenty-one percent of schools did not have any chronic absenteeism. You can see where Tiburon ranked during that school year in the state. Hundred-and-twenty-ninth for Pecassett, hundred-and-fifty-first for the middle school, hundred-and-sixty-seventh for the high school, two-hundred-and-eighth for Fort Barton, and two-hundred-and-twenty-fourth for Ranger. And I did pull the leaderboards for each of those schools, or excuse me, the, the dashboard for each of those schools.
Amy, is a higher number on that previous slide better or worse?
Worse.
Worse.
Okay.
The other thing, the other factor you have to keep in mind is, this is by number of teachers in the building. So the smaller the school, the higher, the higher the percentage rate is going to be. So, because I went crazy when I saw this slide above Ranger being two-hundred-and-twenty-fourth. We, we had one teacher that was out on extended medical leave that-
But wouldn't that count as a-
Only, only if they're absent five consecutive days, they have a note from the doctor, and the superintendent approves it.
So-
So it, you know, there's a lot of factors that come into play with, with that. So that one teacher put us as chronically absent school for teachers.
It also was the way we manage our data that had an impact, so we've already seen an improvement in the day-to-day data that we're collecting, because what you pay attention to moves, you know, in terms of metrics, what you measure matters, or what you, what matters to you, you measure. And so we're paying a lot more attention to this, knowing that this impacts school days. And so the way we report our data to RIDE and the way that if someone is going to be out for an extended amount of time or requesting to take a family medical leave, that process and that communication, and therefore that reporting, is getting better, and we hope that that will be reflected in our data and our school report cards going forward.
So I'm having a hard, hard time understanding why, if it, so you just suggested that if a teacher is out nineteen days, they're chronically absent, and so you have a chronically absent teacher in that school? And if that- Well-
It's a bit small.
At Ranger, it's one teacher.
For, for us, it would be one teacher, because our schools are small. It is not. But if you have a small school, most of the year, more teachers, you might have two or three teachers might be chronically absent.
How many, what percentage of teachers have to be chronically absent to make it a chronically absent school? Over ten percent?
Ten percent, yes.
You don't have ten, you don't have more than ten teachers at Ranger? I guess maybe not.
During that data, I think it was fourteen.
Okay. No, no, I get, I get how one, you know, in a small, your N is small, it doesn't-
It gets to the point when, when we start looking at teacher absenteeism.
Right.
If they've been absent three days, should they stay out for the fifth, you know, to get five days? And we, we tell people, no. You need to come back to school and be with the students as much as you possibly can, and we'll deal with the chronically absent issue. But, you know, it comes into that, into that kind of play when, when we start paying attention to attendance.
A teacher, what?
If a teacher's out for three days.
Yeah.
They could, they, they, they stay, okay, I'm going to stay out for, because, because most of the time when they're out for more than one day, they're under doctor's care.
Right.
So they'll go to a doctor and stay out for the five days, get the doctor's note, then those days don't count against them. If they stay out for three days, come back to work because they're feeling better, they come back sick, the days count against them. But that's the way the system's set up.
But you can't submit a doctor's note until you've been out for five days?
Five days is the minimum.
So you've incentivized them to become-
Well, I, I, we, we try to get them in school as much as possible.
No, I get, I get that, and probably the teacher would like to come back, but it's crazy that you've built, we've built a system, or someone's built a system, I didn't build it, that is incentivizing them to take more time.
Let's not be lost on the fact, the total has to equal eighteen. So don't let the five be misconstrued as the problem.
Thank you.
The problem is eighteen days.
Right.
Okay, so let's not be lost on that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, okay.
And I think that, that speaks to, I think there's three things. First of all, what you pay attention to, you know, moves, right? So measuring that data, paying attention to that, that data will help us make that data better. We're getting better daily at reporting things more exactly. And I think the third thing is the culture shift that needs to happen, where we all recognize how important it is to have a quality, experienced, certified teacher in the room. And passing that off to a less experienced, or perhaps, perhaps less educated substitute may need to happen at times, but it's not the same, it's not the same quality. And so that culture shift of recognizing that, coming to work and being a professional and recognizing that, that matters, is a big part of the conversation around this data.
And, and, and one other thing that we, because we've talked about this a lot at Ranger because of the situation that we're in, is everything counts. So personal days count as absent days.
Right.
Bereavement days count as absent days.
Right.
And so they need, they can't go over eighteen.
Right.
You know, so it's, it depends on what kind of emergency they have during that one academic year, and, and, and we, you know, we take into, we take that into effect.
So if you allow five personal days, I'm not sure where it is now, but, and, opposite, four personal days, five bereavement days, so a teacher does have kind of a bad luck year, and that's already nine, that's half of her eight, or eighteen days.
Correct.
Yes.
And what, what, you know, what this is brought to bear, getting to the point about culture, is that it's already shifted our culture in that there's an awareness factor that is existing, you know, I, I want to kind of caution in a more positive way, in that, and this is for students and faculty, every day counts. And when we say every day counts, every day truly counts, that we want all of our students in our classrooms as much as possible, and our faculty, if you're well, if, if you're well. And so there, there is that, that positive silver lining to that. Rankings are always, always tough to kind of look at, but, you know, that's, we feel confident that we are making progress in it, you know.
All right, so that was having the awareness. That was sort of my question was, is that sort of feedback or education sufficient or at least efficacious in changing behavior? And it sounds like you feel it is by your observation. Is there data that supports that anywhere, like studies of some sort? How you change chronic absenteeism among teachers or students?
There is a lot of studies about the value of a qualified, high-quality educator in the room, of course, right?
No, that I get, all right, yeah.
Yeah, it's self-evident, but certainly paying attention to it shifts it already. And then those perhaps long-needed and very healthy conversations about what being a professional means are also happening and, and changing culture.
Is there, so certainly people can have, you know, very serious life issues, either for their family or themselves, or whatever. Do those, you know, hopefully rare, small numbers of people who have a serious illness when they're out for six months, does that shift the whole population or does that really still only count as their one? You know, they're still only in, you know, one contribution to getting a school to chronic absenteeism? If I'm making myself clear, maybe not.
If I'm understanding you correctly, if we're reporting our data properly and I'm out for a chronic, ongoing, approved family medical leave, that doesn't ding anybody. That's just, we, RIDE's data pool and the system is set up to not.
Including your own illness if you're out for a long period of time. Okay.
And I think it's made a big, you know, on the student side, we call it a nudge. I think there's been a big nudge on the faculty side also.
And this data is from 1718 or 1819?
1819.
1819.
But we're also, we're tracking this year.
This year's in real time.
Not through, not through RIDE, but through ASOP.
Right.
So we're going to be one, two, three, four and five in the state next year?
Well.
That's hope.
That's right, that's right, yes.
Aim on, let's do it.
Well, no, but I do.
Just asking.
About how competitive we are.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I, I do hope that when we look at this year over year, that with all the efforts being made, that we will see some rise.
It's had a big awareness for families.
Yeah.
I'm seeing less family vacations this year than we have in, have in the past because as soon as they take a family vacation, especially if they take it early in the year, they're automatically on that list.
Right.
So, so I think the more information that gets out to parents, the better and I think, I think they value education.
All right, I'm going to need to go counting some days at home. Okay. Anything else?
This was the last slide we had for you today. I was going to just, but this has been covered by my colleagues and as you can see, how our schools are measured, the accountability results, the last two bulleted items are student absenteeism and teacher absenteeism. So again, you may recall the presentation we made to you in the fall when we went through RIDE CAS and SAT and all those results. And at the end, they showed you the ratings for our schools, those stars. Those absentee, both student and teacher factor into the stars. So again, our principals are paying great attention to it, topic we talk about a lot and I think it's going to make a difference moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we are. So Amanda, Mrs. Amanda, Mrs. Farnsworth was just pointing out that you might want to take a picture with maybe Mr. Cabral and Mr. Sankione. If only we had phones or something that could take pictures.
If only.
Would you like to do that and maybe your family? Come on, oh yeah, look at that. So. Sally, why don't you go up there? Why don't you go take a picture? Yeah. Throwing Sally up there for some eye candy. Okay, we're good? All right, so we are on item 10?
C.
C? THS Handbook with National Honor Society. Doctor, or Ms. Ashley? Maybe someday, Doctor.
Yes, thank you. So before we get into some of the details on the proposed handbook, first, just the overall objective in updating our handbook was first increasing transparency and openness, just making it more open and clear to our students and families, what our policies are, what our procedures are, and also just general user friendliness. The existing handbook is just, it was just difficult to find some basic information. You were flipping through pages, there wasn't a logical flow in terms of the sections. And so our first approach was simply starting with the student-based information and moving out to the front of the handbook, having a real clear, clear table of contents. And then when we look at the consequences and infractions, putting that in a simplified table format and using the state code so that the state already defines what an infraction is and putting those right into the handbook so that, again, we can be really transparent and clear about when there is an issue, where it's coming from, and then a corresponding format for potential consequences. But further, based off of previous feedback from the committee, we added some clarity. And in yours, you'll see the new updated handbook format, but then if you have the digital copy, there should be some highlighted, particular sections highlighted in yellow. And those were highlighted based off of the feedback from the committee previously. So specifically National Honor Society. So we added in some additional detail around the purpose and goals of National Honor Society, but also the steps in terms of how students are selected and approved for that National Honor Society. We had a question previously about field trip and medication use on field trip. And so we added language from the school committee policy number 1262 and built that directly into the proposed handbook. We also had questions previously around technology and cellphone use. And so we added in additional language, again, just clarifying. And in this case, we tried to add some examples of when improper cellphone use is and what proper cellphone use would be, again, for increased transparency and clarity. We also unfortunately have to include language around vaping. We wish we didn't have to go here with this, but it's a reality. And so, again, we added language and possible consequences for an incident when a student is found vaping or a vaping-related device. But we also included pieces in there around that it's around safety and we want to make sure our students are healthy. And what can we do to develop a plan in that if a student does have a problem, what we can do to support the student and the family to help get them off of that potential device. Around the technology piece, we added, again, additional language on cyberbullying. Again, it's rare, but it can happen where students have improper use of technology. So we included hypothetical potential examples of what improper use of that technology might be. And then, again, based off of prior feedback, we added in our grade point average chart so that it's really clear based on the level of the course and your, what you get for your grade, how that would factor into your overall GPA. And so I know there's, there's quite a bit in there. The sections that I just described, those are the sections where we looked at content. The handbook itself, in terms of the other sections, the content did change, but it was the format, again, and just shifting sections around so that, again, it was more student-centered in the beginning and then as you progressed along towards the latter portion, the consequences area.
Did you know that all your pages are 30?
Yeah, so I realized that after, apparently there's some issue in Word and I just realized that shortly before this meeting.
It's on review.
There are page numbers in the original document. And we're going to make sure that.
When I'm on page 30, I don't see it.
Yeah.
Mr. Ashley, we did not receive the yellow-lined version.
Oh, you didn't?
We have, well, certainly not electronically.
He said it was the digital copy.
They just scan and put everything into a PDF for us.
All right.
Would it be possible just to get a copy of it?
Yeah, we absolutely can make sure you get that, yeah.
All right, so if you, dare I say it, if you could turn to page 30?
Thirty. There we go.
That's the best one.
God, so.
If you, if you know the subject area of a.
So I'm just looking at the GPA weight chart. So if you are in, so level one is honors, I assume?
That's correct.
And level two is?
College prep, we call, and then AP.
And then AP, okay. So that clarifies that because I've always kind of wondered. But then, but those numbers are not on a four-point scale?
It's, it's a weighted average. So the honors and the AP are weighted.
But how do you convert, so I can see kind of plugging in all my grades
Right.
to this chart and coming up with my average. But it's potentially more than four. So it's not a four-point scale anymore. It's, and how does that translate to the basic requirement of maintaining a 3.5 for National Honor Society?
Yeah, so that, we, we use this, the system you're looking at or the chart is that chart we use for the 3.5. So to your point.
So it has to be on, so it's got to be a 3.5 when you arrive at whatever number you get.
Depending on the level of courses you've taken and the grades you've gotten.
All right. Because I always thought a four-point scale ended at four, I guess. That was an A, all right. And then, so this is certainly a far more robust description of the process for National Honor Society. So this is actually new, correct? Sort of the teacher council and or faculty council and?
So the, the process.
At least new to the handbook.
It's new to the handbook, that, that level of detail, correct. The process is not different than what we have historically been doing.
Okay. And then, so it says seniors and juniors who have maintained a 3.5 cumulative grade point average. So that is in the fall of their junior year? So it really just reflects their ninth and 10th grade grades, correct?
If you're a junior, incoming junior, correct.
Okay. So then what happens to seniors in the fall of their senior year? Are they eligible to get in again?
Yes, yes.
And what happens to juniors if their grades?
Are not eligible.
Take a hit in their 11th? So, so I got, you know, I managed to get 3.5 all through ninth and 10th grade.
Yep.
Things don't go so well in 11th grade.
So if.
If they drop below 3.5, do they get?
They, they would not get immediately removed. So if they were initially, so if they got inducted in the fall of their junior year, but then for whatever reason had a dip, they would not get immediately removed, they'd essentially get on probation. So there'd be a review and a meeting and an opportunity to improve, you know, before final review.
Is that included in here?
No.
Not, not that specific, not that specific point. But what we find actually is if a student's in probation or jeopardy, it's for a behavioral infraction as opposed to academic, you know, right.
And what percentage of students meet the 3.5 at the end of their 10th grade?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. In, I'd have to go back and check that. It's a moderate size of the cohort of that grade.
It was a big size by the induction ceremony in the fall.
Yeah, yeah, no, which is something, you know, we're proud of.
Some other way, but.
I will tell you, one question that's come up is the potential to raise the standard of GPA for eligibility as a discussion topic amongst the faculty. And so it's something we're looking at potentially, but we're not prepared to make a formal recommendation.
All right. And how many students have had a GPA above 3.5 didn't get in?
It was a very select few. And that would have, so if you were found eligible initially based on academics, then after their essay and their application and the faculty review, if for whatever reason in that process, meaning in their essay and their application and the faculty review, something came out, again, in that case, it's almost entirely always some kind of behavioral incident, then the student might not be found eligible.
All right, is the essay included in here? I don't see that, but it's probably not.
I'm sorry, it's part of the application. I just point that out as, it's an application component.
Got it.
But for any junior who in theory is found academically eligible, but then not admitted officially, would be open to apply again as a senior.
Got it, okay. And is there any appeal process if you didn't get in or?
Yeah, so we put that note and just a quick point on the final decision. So administration is per the National Honor Society guidelines. We're not involved in the decision-making in terms of which students. It's that faculty council. And per, per the guidelines, there's a note in here that there's, there's no formal appeal. They can, they can go back to the faculty review committee if they decide they want to for some extenuating circumstances. And again, if they're a junior and they're still found not eligible, they'd be encouraged to apply again as a senior.
Okay.
I don't know if you asked this or not.
Probably not.
Are there ever times where there are students who don't hit the 3.5 that are invited?
No, no. Because that initial eligibility is. Oh, yeah, like that's how.
I think it's important.
Yeah, no, no, it's a, it's a good, it's a good clarifying question. So it's not like there's just a general letter sent out to every student, those initial.
Not even those that are close.
Oh, no. Like it's a very hard, it's a very clear distinction line, literally a line is drawn.
Because it's definitely an achievement.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, we want to encourage all of our students to strive for that achievement.
Absolutely.
But that initial invitation to apply is sent only to eligible students.
And if a student increased their GPA between junior and senior year?
Then as seniors, incoming seniors, they would be invited to apply. Correct. And that does happen on occasion. Exactly, exactly. That's where the faculty committee comes in and makes the final determination.
Okay. Any other questions? Lee? Sally? Diane?
Thank you for making these updates. How this handbook will get us through the rest of this school year?
Will you, while Miss Ashley has to that?
Uh, yes, that's correct. And if, in, through the school improvement team, as we discussed earlier, if there's specific topics we wish to go back and revisit, then we would come before the committee.
Okay. Does that apply to the middle school as well?
Yeah, so our handbook was presented in August of last year and if there's any changes to programming.
It will be in August of this.
Exactly. I will present it in August as well.
Okay. All right, so we still need to approve this, correct?
You do.
I'm going to ask for a motion to approve. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Thank you.
It's been a rather long road for you.
We got there.
All right, and where are we? Old business, right? FY budget, FY 21 budget review. Dr. Sankione?
Okay. Bring up some slides up on the screen here for you. So we've gone through this data with you many times, so I'm going to just move through some of the slides and just bring you up to date on where we currently reside. Thank you, keep going. Go, 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 keep going, go, 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 keep going, keep going. Keep going. One more. One more. There we go. Okay, so as we formulated the FY 21 budget, we looked at where we started for FY 20 and we calculated what an increase could be from the town, a maximum increase of 4%. Also looked at state aid and looked at then what that amount would be. And that's the $1,284,899 number that's on that slide. We then also looked at what that would equal for a budget and that's the $33 million budget. They all use round numbers to dis. There, I'll use round numbers to describe that. However, what we've been discussing as an administrative body and with the school committee is a budget to bring in level service. And the definition of level service is no new staff, no new programs, no new anything, just basically move forward. What you're doing this year to the next year is a $35.4 million budget, which leaves a deficit of $2.2 million. And I have to again emphasize that $2.2 million deficit is predicated on a 4% increase. I need you to move the slides for me. And again, just for the school committee's edification, 75% of our budget is dedicated to staff. And you can see the numbers up there. We currently fund our staff at $17.7 million. There are a number of indicators that drive that number up this year, which is our contracts, our steps, the things that are in the contract. You can see all the line items there. It's an increase of about $1.2 million, which brings staff in at $18, almost $19 million. Those are all negotiated contracts, they're fixed and mandated cost.
So Peter, before you go past this, our contractual increases for the teachers, which was sort of the biggest bulk, but basically it was across the, you know, all of our employees, was 3.5%. So how do we get to 6.7%?
That's the total, so when you add in all those other line items that are there, you have step increases, lane changes, so an increase for subs, longevity. You have the non-union personnel increase in there. You have Council 94 in there.
So the longevity's-
And so that's budget, it's not a, it's not a 6.7 budget increase. It's just a 6.7% increase in salary and wages.
No, I get, I understand that. So... So our total payroll, all right. So substitutes, did we increase that over our FY 20?
Yes.
Budget?
That $110,000, the $110,000.
Just to bring it in line-
That's the increase, it's an increase.
That's those who represented the increases, yes.
And that's to bring it in line with actual costs over the previous years. That's to bring it in line with actual costs. It's just been sorely underbudgeted.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out where the percentages are. All right, go ahead.
So the other 25% of our budget is our expenses. And you can see here that we're increasing the expense budget by 1.1 million, 7.62%. You can see where we currently are at $15.2 million and raising it to $16.4. But the factors behind that, what drives that, are things that are not modifiable in our budget. So special education, you had a great presentation from our special ed director, Sarah Craig, the last time we met. Transportation, we talked about that. We have an 8% increase there. Health, dental insurance premiums, again, those things are mandated and fixed. Our retirement contribution, our technology, net $94,000. That's for our subscriptions and things that we were committed to do for our educational purposes, and then unemployment insurance. So again, when you look at the factors that drive our expenses, I would say to you, there's not a lot of room there for us to modify those things.
Those are increases, not absolute.
Right, that's what drove the $1.1 million increase.
Could you remind me again what the big drivers are in that technology increase?
Are mandated and fixed costs for subscriptions and-
What types of subscriptions?
For a program-
Is it Microsoft license?
That would be part of it. A program like Lexia that we use for reading, our mathematics, our online math programs, our Aspen subscription, our SIS program.
Are these taking perhaps place of some textbook purchases?
Minimally, at best.
Okay.
So you have this sheet that you just gave us. And I thought the regular bus was going up $72,000, that was 8%. How did we get to 267?
So that includes all transportation?
Okay. So I'm still not at 267.
No, you've got 109 and 135. 244.
Oh, you're looking at that. I was looking at this, not that, okay. All right, so I go ahead.
Don't keep going.
Yep.
And so again, I want to, because we had a great conversation about special education here, I wanted to show you the impact of what we have to provide in special education on our budget. So what I've done here is pulled out all the line items directly used to support special education in the Tivin and Pablo schools. These are all, again, fixed and mandated costs. You know, it's the salaries, it's the out-of-district placements, the regional assessment, you can read what's up there. And that's $8.7 million alone out of our budget. And just to put that in perspective then, as you, I wanted to show you our per pupil cost for special education using the same communities that I've compared to in a number of other slides and another, a number of other data points. And again, you'll see the Tivins, you know, right smack in the middle there. Again, I want to pay a huge commendation to Sarah Craig, who looks for synergy in our programming and tries to, you know, keep as many students in district as possible by creating programs, working with our principals on providing the best education possible. So even though the number is big, what we spend on special education, I'd say to you that, you know, we're doing a really good job with it.
So that's per pupil of students, all students who have an IEP?
Correct.
Okay. That's an interesting number. Can we get the N of that? I think it's like 300 or something like that, isn't it?
The number of students?
Who have IEPs. So you're saying there are, so for one of a way, better way of describing it, let me, so there are students who don't have IEPs and there are students who have IEPs. There are about 300, I think, students who have IEPs in the district. So you're saying that their per pupil cost for those 300 students is $53,000?
Yeah, but don't, not just in district, that's out-of-district students too.
No, I understand that, okay.
Yeah, so if you take every student had an IEP and to take that total cost, including transportation, salary, tuition, all that, and then divide it by the number of students.
So I could actually calculate it from the total of $8 million. And what I'm getting at is the fact that our quote-unquote per pupil cost of 15, 16, 17,000 dollars, something like that?
14.
14, okay. So, so the per pupil cost for any student who doesn't have an IEP is substantially less than $14,000, which gets to the whole CTE thing as well, because that's really how that number should be calculated. But, okay, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna skip through some slides here on what our school system's been achieving. You've seen it, and we'll save that for Thursday night. And just come back to, you know, the real crux of what we're speaking about here this evening, which is, again, the budget numbers we're looking at. That, you know, the max budget we can achieve is $33.1 million. We need $35.4 to just continue to do what we're doing. That deficit is $2.2 million. I would recommend to the school committee to look at two outside sources of revenue, both fund balance and Medicaid, to bring that deficit down to $1.3 million.
How much does that leave in the fund balance and Medicaid? Does that completely deplete them?
Yes, for all intents and purposes, yes. And I'm not sure if you want to go through the rationale for why we're in this situation tonight. I know we've done this a few times already with you.
I don't think we need to.
Okay, and so I'll just bring it back to the conclusion of where we are, that this district cannot absorb a $1.3 million cut. And so if in fact we have to do that, I'm gonna say to you right now that we will reduce our expense accounts down to the bare-bone minimum, which will have an impact on education. We will have to cut non-instructional personnel, people who help our students every day in our classrooms doing important work. And we will have to cut instructional personnel, people who are in front of our students, teaching them on an everyday basis and achieving the great results we're after. There's no way we can cut $1.3 million without going into those drastic steps.
Any questions?
Huh? It's being sarcastic.
Really? Any questions? Yep.
Somebody had asked the question last time about the buses, and they wanted to know where the buses go. They don't just tool around town. So when I testified against the tolls, I had to tell them where they went. They were kind of surprised. We have the regular elementary and secondary to and from. Everybody knows about that. And we also explained the people that see the empty buses, and they call me up. And I say, if there's something happens and you have to send everyone home, there has to be a seat for every child. You can't say, Johnny, you have to stay here because your mother dropped you off. No, you're all getting out of here very quickly. So that's why you have all those empty seats. And then special education, Newport County. They go to Penfield, Perkins, Bradley. They go to Rogers for tech ed. They go to non-public schools, St. Phil's, All Saints, and out-of-district. Then you have your curricular, extracurricular activities and co-curricular, Tiven High School, Tiven Middle School, and the band. And then you have the late buses. So they do leave here and go across the bridge lots of times. So they were very surprised. And then we have to have free and public access to education, so we can't charge us tolls, thank you very much, anyway. That was another day. And I brought my chicken also, he was a big hit.
So I think it would be useful to understand, especially with the rate of increase in transportation, if we could break down exactly what's being allocated for sort of the, you know, the three, you know, middle school, elementary, and middle, and high school runs. What's being allocated for transportation to out-of-district placements? And what's being allocated for parochial school transportation?
Yep, we have that report, and now we can send it to you again.
Yeah, no, I think it's worthwhile making public, not that, you know, there's really room to modify that much. Okay, any other questions?
I, we clearly have to continue going into this detail. What I would like to see us doing is focusing not only on the comparison between the FY 20 budget to the FY 21 proposal, but the FY 20 to-date realities. And as best we can, come to some kind of conclusion as to where we will end up by June 30th. I know it's gonna take some exercise, if you will, but I think it's important that we not just rely on this budgetary number, because clearly last year we were unable.
This here is exactly that. This is based on the actuals to date.
We need to do that at a line level. I think we need to see where is it specifically? In the salaries, in the technology, you know, it's-
I'm sorry, in terms of transportation?
No, no, every, every. Every account. I mean, if we're gonna be this much in the hole, we have to, as a group, have a real solid understanding of where we are this fiscal year as compared to the budget we were given to see, okay, are we gonna hit that mark this year? Are we gonna perhaps come out ahead? And we won't have such an urgency, or is it gonna be even worse?
Okay, so I-
We just don't know.
So that's been provided, I provided that to you today. That was the budget to actual through January. The part, and that also compares it to 2019, which was also, bear with me one second, which was also at the request of the Finance Committee. I can certainly add a column to that for projected actuals.
I think that's probably gonna be a worthwhile exercise in an effort to perhaps find additional savings that we're not really aware of at this point.
Okay, I can certainly do that. Now, that also, you know, there is also a small lag in that in terms of, you know, when we receive invoices, like for example, on transportation.
Understood.
First student has only provided us through December.
Do they vary much month-to-month?
On the regular transportation, I'm sorry, for the, speaking to transportation specifically, regular transportation is a fixed amount every month of about $90,000. It's the late buses, the special runs to the Met and things like that that vary month-to-month, and, which is why on here I have like an average of the actuals. And the same thing with athletics. Athletics varies from month to month. Other invoices, you know, like salaries are, obviously are pretty consistent. Other expenses, like utilities, I would expect at this point to be fairly consistent, given that we've had like a mild winter and so forth. So it's, it just depends on, you know, what type of expense we're talking about, how frequently we're billed. As I was saying, using again, transportation as an example, first student has only billed us through December. So in terms of that, I would have hoped that we would at least have, would have had January's bill by now, and we don't have it by now. And so we-
Cash flow is not an issue for them?
I, well, I believe cash flow is an issue for them, but, you know, we're not gonna run out and give them, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars without an invoice, clearly. So in terms of that, I can certainly do that. And in terms of the projection, you know, I can certainly find out when the last invoice was and then multiply it by the different months. So you're not gonna have exactly in January or in February exactly six months of expenses for every line item. And so that actual, projected actual number will vary as you go along, and we'll get more accurate as we get to the end of the year.
I agree.
But I'm happy to do that.
But it's incumbent upon us to be as educated as possible as to the realities we're in.
Yep, right.
And try to make recommendations, if it's at all possible. If there's any changes that can be implemented now.
Again, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I'll call your attention to this slide here and just remind you that the FY 20 budget, the budget we're currently working in, is an operating budget of $33 million, but 1.1 million of that was one-time revenue. The actual local contribution was $31.8 million. And so if you look at that number and then look at what we could increase our budget to, the $33.1 million, which the town can do at 4%, the delta again just compounds itself with the one-time money. Certainly, we can scour the FY 20 budget and look for things, but I'm gonna suggest to you that the problem isn't in the budget. The budget, you can take this budget book. When 75% of your budget is salaries, it's easy to calculate. When 25%, if you've put in special education, transportation, and energy, we're now at 97%. You're not gonna find much. That, the problem is right there.
Just to, one of Diane's points, the invoices from the out-of-district placements can also come in at the end of the year, is that correct? Or, but we shouldn't know what those numbers are fairly?
That, those numbers are fairly accurate based on the information given to us by the region, just based on the number of students where they're placed, all of that. And that has been accounted for in the FY 20 budget.
We get a monthly report.
We get a monthly report.
Okay.
And it may go up or down, a handful of students, you know, one or two students, depending on, you know, whether the level of services have changed and all of that, but it's not by significant amounts.
Okay.
And if I may, Dr. Larkin, to answer your question about the transportation. So the numbers that Dr. Sankione had up on the slides were, to Ms. Farnsworth's point, Farnworth, my apologies, is, you know, those were the changes in the columns budget-to-budget from '20 to '21. At the time the slide was prepared, that's the information we had. This information here is based on the actual invoices. So the $131,000 that you see here is based on projected actuals. Then we would also have to add in the $135,000 that we need for the special education budget that we are expected to pay by the region next year in order to get to that 260, roughly $267,000 that you saw on the slide. So this, this is actuals, what was on the slide was budget-to-budget. So there's sort of apples and oranges.
Okay.
So these are actuals for '20, or projected actuals for '20. And the increases that you saw on the slide were based on the two columns, '20 and '21 budgeted amounts.
Okay. Okay.
That's it for the budget. Go to capital or any other questions?
Uh, I'm just thinking. So there, so can you go back a couple slides? To the, that, I think. And then the next slide again?
This was, the next slide would be salary and wages?
No, not, not back, forward.
Tell me, what slide are you looking for, American?
I, so that, with a four percent increase, the total deficit we're facing after taking whatever Medicaid and fund balance money we have.
You've kinda worked that, David, just.
One point, one point.
Whatever, something, one point, one something.
If we actually were, so say there was no cap, that would increase our total increase to about six point five percent, am I right there?
Four percent was, uh, probably close to the eight.
Keep looking for the.
Four percent's about a million, so you're short about a million three, it's probably like eight point something.
No, four percent's not, or a million's not four percent, I would think.
Dr. Larkin, if, on one of the pages in the budget book, where it has the total for all expenses, if you go from twenty to twenty-one, it's roughly seven point one five percent. Like, total overall jump.
Seven point one five percent, alright, so, alright. Okay. What was my last question? Alright, well, we can talk about whether or not we have, need to have another meeting after Thursday. I think we probably do, the question is when and how we set the agenda for that. Alright, you wanna go to the?
Capital?
Capital?
Sure.
Hi. I hope this has been fun for you.
Thank you.
Okay, this, for our conversation last evening, I've made some adjustments to the capital request. I upped the refurbishing, the bathrooms, we had a building committee meeting today and looking at how those bathrooms are tracking for construction this year, and just based, and the request is to replicate what we're doing this year for next year, it would be prudent to move what was originally three hundred thousand up to three fifty. The steps stayed the same, the siding stays the same, the interior door frame stays the same, the tennis court adaption stays the same. We dropped the kitchen equipment down, we finally got some estimates in on all the equipment, I can show that to you momentarily. The van stays the same, and then prior discussion last evening, as you know, we've significantly cut our technology budget and now have added in the Chromebook replacement as part of capital, so it brings the capital request to five ninety-five, five hundred, and then, I know you've seen the pictures, but let me just go. So we dropped the kitchen equipment request back, and here's why, we just finally got some good estimates in. So the three things that are really a necessity to replace here at the high school is the dishwasher, it really doesn't function at all, the walk-in cooler, which does not maintain its temperature the way it should be, and two warmers are just from the seventies and don't work effectively. So those three items would equal to ninety, which is why we dropped it down, and then sort of shifted funds over to the bathroom where it's really critically necessary.
Question on the bathrooms. So we were given two hundred thousand, I think, from the Budget Committee or from the town?
That's being spent already.
I, right.
For our capital?
Uh-huh. Are you expecting that to be sufficient for the work that's already started?
So it was a combination of what the town allocated in capital and what we had left over in the bond project, in the project itself, so those two amounts is what we projected to cover these bathrooms. It looks like we'll kind of track over a little bit, when they got behind the walls and they found some pipes that were, that needed to be replacement, that need to be replaced, that we didn't anticipate, they found some support structures that also had to be replaced. So it's, it's going to come in a little over budget, but I would say it's not tracking terribly over.
So not material?
Material itself.
To worry about hitting the twenty budget with that over.
It's not a material impact, no.
Okay.
The tennis courts. Correct me if I'm wrong, we did a little bit of work on them last year.
That is correct, we filled the cracks in.
I thought it was a full redo of the.
No, it was five thousand dollars that filled in the cracks, and what's being requested here is to replace the posts, repaint the lines, and put a windscreen around it, so it's a little more usable for our tennis teams.
Okay.
What was that number last night? It was still in the five hundred somewhere?
It was five eighty-five.
Five eighty-five, yeah.
Well, they were able to reduce the kitchen.
Yeah, no, I get that, I was just wondering how close we were to the same number, okay. Okay?
I certainly hope we're approved for all of this, because I think all of it's vital.
I'd agree. Would you want, I think possibly revote this, because the numbers changed?
Re-what?
Revote it?
I don't think we've ever actually voted it.
We never did.
I think you proved it last night.
No.
My wishful thinking.
Yes.
We haven't voted the.
We haven't voted the entire budget yet, so.
And certainly, we don't have our final budget submission till March.
Right.
So we still have to.
The one thing you did vote was the, the four percent increase, that's what we sent to the town to get the game started.
For your preliminary submission, yes.
Yeah, it was a preliminary, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not suggesting it's gonna change, but it, you know, the steps.
So do you wanna, do you want us to vote the capital budget?
I think so, if you're gonna, because Thursday night, we're gonna present it, so.
Okay. I'll ask for motion to approve? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Alright, we are up to announcements, scheduled meetings, reports. So I was, attended the RIASC chairs meeting again on February eighteenth. There were basically two major, well, maybe three major components of the meeting. One was just reviewing some of the legislation, and we're hopefully gonna get a summary from RIASC of all of the things that are, you know, sort of hot and likely to actually make it out of committee sometime in the next few weeks. The second was a presentation on something they called super eval. I don't know if they were, what exactly the super was supposed to stand for, they thought it was a great evaluation, or, but anyway, it was a program that allowed districts to evaluate the superintendent, as well as other, allow the superintendent to evaluate other administrators. I just walked away from it thinking, we did a really good job, actually, of evaluating Dr. Senkione, because all of the components were there and we didn't need a fancy program, fancy program. And then the other was a presentation by Ride, which left me with the distinct impression that they are really still thinking through what the impact of the curriculum and school accountability legislation is, even though I was under the impression it was now the law of the land and we were all supposed to be compliant with it, they were like, well, we haven't really figured out what this means yet, which was, I don't know, reassuring in some ways, because it was like, well, I can't get in that much trouble, but also sort of funny, that's all. So, but any of us can attend those meetings, I'll try and forward them to you guys, so. That was me. Yes, Mrs. Black?
So it's a public school week, so we can all celebrate and thank all of you for all your hard work. When I was in church, it was parochial school week a few weeks ago, and they prayed for the public, parochial school. I said, oh, what about us? So now it's our week, something like that.
Alright, we can't pray for this.
No, we won't pray, but we'll just.
Well, we can all pray, I'm sure we all are praying silently.
Can I ask, for this Thursday's Budget Committee meeting, are you gonna post for us?
Yeah, we're past, we're past, so.
Yeah, it's done last week.
If we aren't, then.
I didn't check.
Everyone needs to be quiet when we go.
I didn't check either.
I'll stay home.
Alright. So, so I guess the, the other, so the question I have now is, we talked about it a little bit at our meeting last night, do we want to have a budget meeting in the near future? Do you wanna wait and see what the temperature is like when we go on Thursday?
My opinion is, I think we should see what the temperature is like on Thursday.
Okay.
And then we can get a better look at things we've talked about previously.
Yep.
Where we need to go, where we think we should go.
Yeah, I'm sort of agreeing, in agreement with you. Alright.
Climate is with the Budget Committee, all the folks.
Okay. Might be chilly. Alright.
Might be the heat we've been waiting for.
I'm waiting to see what happens on Thursday.
I think that even with a high hope that we will get a four percent increase allocated, that we still have some serious issues. I don't know what the right amount of time is, but I don't think we should walk away from this discussion for any length of time.
Alright.
My mic's on. And I would prefer that we do meet at some point before our next regularly scheduled meeting, if that's possible.
Alright, well, we can.
Which is March twelfth.
March tenth.
March tenth. Well, we can see how things go on Thursday and then be in communication, we're allowed to talk about that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Out of meeting. Sally, any thoughts? Okay, alright, I just happened to be spying at Mrs. Farnworth's laptop and did remember there was something else, I couldn't remember. On March twenty-first, there's a RIASC meeting, which is a Saturday morning. Yay. It's a presentation of sort of where the, there's a task force out of one of the committees in the Senate that is supposed to be looking at the funding formula. I'm not gonna hold my breath that anything will happen with it right now, especially with what's going on in Providence, but RIASC is gonna have a presentation on March twenty-first from Senator Tim, or Senator Ryan Pearson, about that, so. Do you hear anything? I figured you'd say that. Alright, anything else? Alright, so we are meeting on Thursday, I'm gonna ask for motion to move into executive session under Rhode Island General Law, forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, one, job performance, character, physical or mental, teacher non-renewal, legal advice litigation, collective bargaining, Council ninety-four, legal advice litigation, collective bargaining, NEA Tiverton.
I'll second.
Yep.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
All those in favor?